Good evening. It's Monday, June 17th. We are in the community center of the -- we're in the governor's room of the community center for the monthly school board meeting. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And would you please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is to adopt the agenda. We're using the blue ones in front of you if you have paper for what's on the board book.
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries, the agenda is adopted. If there's any member of our audience who has an item on the agenda tonight they wish to speak to, there's cards in the back where you can write your question and you get it to Ms. Sarah at the end. And when we get there, we'll allot you time and opportunity to address that item. Next, we have the consent agenda. And I'm going to wake it up here. As per our habit, I'll read through the consent agenda. If there's any individual items to deal with, we can. Otherwise, a motion to approve at the end will be in order. We are approving tonight in our consent agenda, regular board meeting minutes of May the 20th, 2019. Board study session minutes of June 3rd, 2019. Approval of bills, $1,513,637.65 for May. And wire transfers of $2,460,377.55 for the same month.
Mr. Chair, the books are all in order.
Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. Personnel. We are accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at North Elementary School effective May 30th, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a health office paraprofessional at North Elementary School effective May 30, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of the receptionist at North Elementary School effective May 23rd, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a paraprofessional at Hoffman Learning Center effective May 30, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School effective May 24, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a special education case facilitator at St. Peter Middle School effective at the conclusion of the 2018-19 school year and extended contract duties. We are accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary School effective May 30, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of South Elementary Principal's secretary effective May 31, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE social studies teacher at St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE art teacher at St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. This is also a replacement position. We are accepting the resignation of the aquatics coordinator at Community Ed effective June 5, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE special education teacher for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a youth development and enrichment coordinator for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are declaring the declaring of equipment as obsolete, allowing for the recycling or disposal of such equipment. A list of items is included in your packet. And we are approving of a high school diploma for...
For Chandler Combs. Chandler has met all requirements for graduation from St. Peter High School.
And this is the end of the consent agenda. Is there any individual items or a motion to approve would be in order?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the consent agenda is approved. We have quite a number of action items tonight. Many of them are kind of bang, bang, bang things. So let's get at it. The first one is approval of the preliminary budget for 2019-20, which starts July the 1st.
Very good, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you'll recall, it was just at a recent board meeting that the board adopted a revised budget for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 19. That adoption propels then the business office to continue its work in preparing for the next fiscal year. And so tonight, tonight's meeting on an annual basis, the board has an opportunity to consider approval of next year's budget. And so Tim Regner is here to walk the full board through the proposed budget for next year. Once Tim is done, we may hear some comments from the finance committee who did have an opportunity to review this and ask some questions earlier tonight. So with that, Tim?
Thank you. We did go through the budget fairly thoroughly at the finance committee meeting, so I'll kind of just try and give an overview and keep it a little shorter, a lot of items, but make sure you ask any questions that you have on how it's been prepared. There's a packet in there. Maybe I want to start with kind of enrollment projections. It's the last page of the budget information. Basically, what it's showing is we're probably projecting pretty flat, stable enrollment for next year based upon the graduating class and the incoming kindergarten class being fairly, fairly stable and have the same numbers. So the enrollment projection uses for fairly stable for the next fiscal year, which will be fiscal year 20. And we project 145 students for the kindergarten, which has usually been hopefully fairly conservative most years. Maybe if you want to flip back to the first page of the presentation, then the adopted budget, the overview of all the different funds, it's got like the A, B, C, D, E, and F columns. I'll maybe skip down to lines 33, and we'll come back to do the general unassigned fund, which is the most thorough or most information there. But the first few items basically start with the LTFM fund balance. We're projecting to have about stable revenues and expenditures in the LTFM fund. This last year, we do have a little bit of negative balance in there, negative balance in there due to the roof repair last year. But and then this one will be gone over more thoroughly next month. We have to update the tenure plan every year with that. And you'll see some adjustments in both the revenue and expenditures, probably when we get a little more information on the following year. The next line is the operating capital. You can see the fund balance is going down a little bit in that one. That's due to the curriculum purchases that we're doing a couple of major ones next year, which is fairly, you know, typical some years. So that's, that's the reason for the decline there. Food service, line 44, and the community service, 47. They're fairly stable to where we've been the last few years. Food services showing a little bit of projection of revenues over expenditures. And the community service, right now, we're projecting a little bit of deficit that may change depending upon how this year's budget works out. The next lines, 50 and 51. The capital projects is the last year of that levy that we will be receiving money in fiscal year 20 of the $575,000. So it was a 10-year levy that was passed obviously 10 years ago, and it'll be the last year. And it's projecting to spend the last of the funds on the various projects at the schools. The bond referendum is again the end of the bond money. There's a few smaller projects or a few things that are still being finalized up, and the hope is to have everything completed and wrapped up in fiscal year 20 on the, you know, the new school and the other remodeling projects that were done. Debt redemption is basically just the payment on the bond. The revenue comes in from the levy and then the payment's caught there. One thing that I'll kind of maybe note on that, there, if you remember in the past, there's always been a 40% A credit. The legislature did pass this year increasing that credit over time up to, I think it phases up to about 70% over the next four or five years. So that's obviously good news for our farmer taxpayers because the state will be helping with, with part of that. So we'll still get the same amount of money, just part of it will be coming from, from the state there additional from that. So the trust fund is our scholarship and other funds. And that's really the end of those, those other smaller funds besides the 01 general fund. I know I went through them fairly quickly. Any questions on those at this time? We'll take them at the end, too. But like I said, most of them are fairly similar. You know, I tried to highlight a couple of the differences that we've had this year, but they're very similar to the last couple of years. The largest part of the budget obviously is line number 10, the general fund unassigned, where most of the revenues come in and expenditures go out through the general fund for the operation of the school. We're projecting to start, if you remember, as Paul alluded to, last month, we approved the revised budget for 19. We're projecting a fund balance again of about $4.1 million at the end of that year. So basically, what we do is, you know, we're kind of working off of that projection and projecting what's going to happen, to the best of our knowledge, to happen for fiscal year 20, which starts July 1st. We're projecting revenues of 25 million, 25 and a half million, expenditures about 25.8. And then we're also transferring some funds in between, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to the actual rollout. And we're projected to have a fund balance of about $4.3 million at the end of the year. If you maybe want to flip over to the next page, the first page is fiscal year 19. That's what we're completing up here in, you know, in 20 days for, for this fiscal year when on June 30th. And this is what we, we approved or you guys approved last, last month on the revised budget. And so this is the same as, as we did last month. These numbers are the basis then for the projection for next year 20, 21, and 22, which are the following three pages of our rollout. If you maybe flip over to fiscal year 20, you can see there on line 191, we're starting the year at $4.1 million. And then basically, we go in there and add to what, you know, our revenues were last year and the things we know are going to change. Couple, I'll highlight a couple of the bigger changes are obviously the state legislature did give us a 2% increase in the, in the revenue on the formula this year. Our enrollment, we're projected to be up to three students for next year. So like I said, that's fairly stable. There's a couple other items that were new legislation this year as far as in special education funding on the cross subsidy. And then we take out the items that were like one-time items last year. And one other larger revenue sources this year is we're, we're now on achievement integration district on line 209, and that's the revenue that is offset with expenditures on line 225, which is a, which is a new program up at the school. I want to highlight line 203, which is transferring some funds in from our, over the last few years, we've assigned some money because of the, the new high school for the operation of that. And this year, we're projecting, or next year, we're projecting that we'll use up some of those funds, approximately $800,000, to meet our fund balance goal from, from there. Skipping down to maybe lines 213 through 229 are the things that we know are going to change on the expense side. Our best estimates on that, basically expenditure increases for staffing, changes in, a couple lines were changing in staffing due to retirements or staffing adjustments. And then got a couple lines in there for, a line in there for, we're going to have some expenses, we just don't really know what they are yet. We typically try and project for that. If you go down to line 233, our estimated expenditures are about $26 million. Our estimated revenues are 26.3, but that does include the money we're transferring over from our assigned funds. And we're doing that to make our fund balance goal. The fund balance goal that was set is currently at 60 days. And if you look down on lines 235, that's basically meeting that projection. You know, if you look in the middle there, it kind of says FY '20 revenue and FY '20 expenses. The revenue is again about $170,000 more than the expenditures, but that does include the transfer from the assigned funds. Basically, we're, we did that to try and meet our fund balance goal. And then the next couple of years that we flip over basically are real similar to this year's projection for FY '21, for fiscal year next year, which would be two years down the road. We're going to have the 2% increase again for the state legislature on the formula. And if you notice on line 277, we are projecting to probably lose a little bit of enrollment. We start to graduate some fairly large classes next year. And like I said, we're hopefully conservative with our projection for the 145 for kindergarten class, but that does decrease the enrollments a little bit. You know, obviously, we'll have a better handle on that come September when we have the final numbers from the kindergarten. The enrollments have been a little bit higher than last year, right now for kindergarten, so we're hoping that the 145 is on the, the lower side. Again, then, we are transferring the balance of the funds we have in our assigned accounts. And we shoot, and if you go down there, we make our fund balance goal again of the 60 days on line 294. And again, in the middle there, you can see the revenues are 26.8 and the expenditures are about 26.8. But again, that does include the money that we're moving over to make the fund balance goal. Then if line, fiscal year 22 on the next page is basically just, you know, there's less things that we know going forward there, using the same assumptions. We just assumed, the legislature passed, it's a two-year basis, so we assumed a 1% increase in the formula. Again, that, that's unknown. And we're looking at enrollment drop again the next year as the, this year's, next year's junior class is a fairly large class that will be graduating in two years. But otherwise, everything's fairly, fairly stable. You know, on enrollment, we just use the students that are there. We don't project a large influx of students moving into the district. We try to, you know, what's here is what we use. And a lot of years, we've gotten some, some families to move in and the enrollment has increased, which is, we've talked about in the past, is the biggest driver of the budget. So, you know, it's pretty straightforward, not a lot of major changes this year in the legislative stuff. You know, a couple other things on referendums we'll, we'll talk about in the future. And then that A item was, was a very nice thing the legislature passed and then along with the 2% increase in the formula. So I know I went fairly quickly over that compared to what the finance committee. There's a lot of information in there. Any questions from anybody for me?
Just, just a quick question. On line 348, which you're looking at the general ed formula increase, it's estimated 1%. What would another, what's 1% raise? You remember?
What 1%?
1% of the general formula, the second year, you're estimating 1%?
Yeah, the third.
How much more would we get if we had 2%?
Additional $159,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so every percent to us is worth about $160,000, 150 to 60, depending on where you go. Good question.
Thank you.
And that really does multiply because it builds on each other.
Other questions for Mr. Regner or the finance committee? Motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary 2019 and '20 budget. Any discussion? Well, one thing I would, I would like to highlight is you heard Tim mention several different times about how enrollment is an important part of our formula as well as some of the things we get from the state. And some, some things we get from the state are pleasant, some things we get from the state are not so pleasant. And we're still trying to sort through some of the gifts that were given to us to figure out which side of that equation they fall on for the coming year. But one thing we can't overlook is that, you know, our board has worked hard the last several years to put some money away when we had fund balances that were pleasant to allow us time to figure out what it was going to cost to run our new building and the new configuration and the programs that we have in place. And it's apparent to us at this time that our ongoing operations are about $800,000 a year higher than what we had expected. We're, we're using $800,000 a year from our savings accounts, which we set aside for this purpose. But those accounts will run out of money. And the reason we do these two- and three-year rollouts, and Tim spends his time going through, okay, the next year is pretty clear, and the year after that, we got a pretty good handle on, but then it starts to get a little fogier when you look out further. The reason we look out further is, is to know well in advance of significant change that may come one way or another and give the board and our community an opportunity to address those things in a proactive way so that we're not slashing and burning and jagged, as you've said in the past many times, you know, you don't want to be doing up and down, up and down sort of thing. And so that's why we do this. And it seems, and it sounds a little dry when you hear it on, on television, but it, it's a real thing. And, and we have a four-year rollout that has some cautionary yellow lights, maybe even a red light out there when you get to the fourth year. And, and so we're going to be spending a lot of time as a board, the remainder of these, of this year, this calendar year, talking about finance. I know some of you might think that's all we ever do talk about, but there's, there's a reason. It's important to maintain the programs and the experiences that our kids have in, in our school district and to make sure that we're being good stewards of, of the responsibilities you've given us. But, you know, with this preliminary budget, we are moving $800,000 this next year from our set aside operational savings account in order to meet our budget. And, and that's an ongoing value that this board and future boards will have to address. So I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't glossed, glossed over because Tim mentioned it very nicely, you know, yeah, we're moving a little money. Yeah, $800,000 is not a little bit of money. But we put it there for that purpose. We have a nice fund balance, so we have time and we have a little money, and we can work on enrollment and other things as we move forward. Anyone else like to chime in or comment? We have a motion in a second before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, preliminary budget is adopted. Next item we have tonight is the consider approval of a yearly governmental lease program. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you said, on an annual basis, Tim and, and the business office make sure that we're able to continue to support programming that has been in existence in the district for quite some time. The Saints Digital Learning Initiative, and then our yearly technology support that's required to help keep the teaching and learning program going in all of our buildings. So Tim is here to talk through the, the numbers that he received from local banks and provide a recommendation to the, to the board on moving forward with this year's lease. Tim?
Thank you, Paul. As Paul stated, we've done this for a number of years. There's two components to the lease, the digital learning lease and then the ongoing technology. This year, the amount is about $278,000. That stayed fairly consistent over the years I've been here. I think last year was a little bit higher, depending upon just the exact needs and numbers and those type of things. And what we typically do then is ask for proposals from the, the local banks, and they've all been, all been really good about giving us over the years, giving us really good competitive proposals. This year, we received them back from three of the local banks. And I guess Hometown Bank was the lowest this year on the proposals. So I guess kind of the recommendation would be to, to go with them for the lease for, for this, this FY '19, and it'll be four and five-year leases. We're now in the stage where we're to the, I think, the fifth or sixth year of the digital learning thing, so the payments are constant. Before, we'd always been kind of building up every year, but now, as long as the amounts and the rates stay similar, the, the payments will be the same that we pay in December on these leases. So you can, you can kind of see the numbers there before you. It's kind of the recommendation to go with, with Hometown Bank on the, on the rate. Like I said, they've always been very good to work with, and I think we have some out of each of the banks.
This will require a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the yearly governmental lease to Hometown Bank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Thank you, Tim. Dr. Peterson, we have the privilege of awarding tenure this evening. What do you want to tell us about these people? Read their names in the record, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As everyone knows, the first three years of teaching in Minnesota is considered probationary. Also probationary is the first year in a new school district. After that time, building principals, site supervisors make a determination as to whether or not to extend continuing contracts to faculty. And so tonight, or this board has, over the last several years, taken its June meeting to, as you mentioned, recognize those teachers who have worked their way through that process. Not everybody does. And so as our principals talk about their faculty and teachers at the administrative team meetings and our principal meetings, it's really exciting to hear them be so enthusiastic about the folks who they bring forward, bring to the board, and really have high hopes for their continued professional growth as they work with our students across St. Peter Public Schools. So having said that, one teacher from South Elementary, Carissa Manx. Three teachers from North Elementary, Bree Steele, Bridget Mathiowetz, and Matt Lewis. Three teachers from the middle school, Megan Gaver, Jason Tupence, and Allison Zender. And three teachers from the high school, Eric Chanthera, Robbie Deering, and Danny Ror Cassie.
Can I be picky just for a minute, but to provide some consistency and some clarification? Only three, only three school districts in the state have tenure. This city's the first class. All the rest of us have continuing contract rights, and we kind of use them interchange. The really, the really nomenclature we should be using is continuing contract rights. If you just look at like page 47, we go from tenure to continuing contracts back to tenure. It just suggests that either we use one with a slash with the other, or just go with continuing contract rights in the future.
In the future. Good feedback. Motion to approve is in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve continuing contract rights for these probationary teachers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Next item we have before us is the approval of board meeting dates for the 2019-20 school year. So that's from July through next June. And those dates are in your packet. Dr. Peterson, you want to tell us?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, you actually see these dates a couple of times a year. One is at the July meeting, or the June meeting. One is at the July meeting, or the June meeting, as we anticipate the next fiscal year, so people can take a look to see where those dates fall and, and the times would stay relatively consistent. The other time that the board has a chance to look at calendar dates and times is during the organizational meeting. And so I know that the board, over the last couple of years, has asked that from time to time, either at study sessions or just in, you know, just as a general practice, we have a chance to look at these to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made. Certainly that can happen, and we have done that from time to time, and sometimes special meetings get called as well. But this is the, the best information that we have right now about what the next 12 months will look like when it comes to board, official board meetings.
And as course it always says at the bottom, the board reserves the right to make changes. So, but these are the ones that we have traditionally put forward, so you know what the next school year is going to look like, probably. This does require a motion.
Move to approve the board meeting dates of 2019-2020.
Oh, I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve these dates. Any further comment or clarification? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And the motion carries. Next item we have tonight is tentative agreements with individual contact, contracts and employment agreements. Dr. Peterson, you want to start?
You bet, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and then I'll pass it up to our negotiations chair, Tim. We have had some early success in talking with individual members of the school district, employees of the school district, in talking through two-year contracts. We have been looking at folks on our administrative team and then also some of our support staff throughout the district. And what you have in your board packet is an overview of each of the nine agreements that have tentatively been reached. That information has also been shared with the negotiations committee, and with that, I'll turn it over to Tim to provide a recommendation, any details that he'd like about these agreements.
Uh, yeah, we've, as the negotiations committee have reviewed, I know at least two of us have, I think all three of us have, and moving forward, we recommend passage of the individual contracts in front of us.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a-
Sure, I'm moved.
It's a motion and a second. Okay, we are doing a contract for the administrative assistant to the superintendent, the business manager, the finance accountant, payroll supervisor and accountant, special programs administrator, community and family education director, early childhood and program assistant, community and family education program assistant. We also have an employment agreement in here with a certified athletic trainer. That's a part-time relationship. Those are the things that are being approved. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or comment?
How many more individual contracts do we have?
I think we are wrapped up. Now we, and as the negotiations committee knows, we are making progress, have made great progress with one group in particular, and additional negotiation meetings will be scheduled this summer with the next groups.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And the motion carries, the contracts are approved. Next item we have tonight is, and it's our last action item, is to consider the approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of St. Peter Recreation and Leisure and St. Peter Community and Family Education. Dr. Peterson, you want to introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, our Director of Community and Family Education, Tammy Skinner, is here to walk us through this next year's agreement that she has had an opportunity to work on with the City of St. Peter. Tammy?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to come and speak about this. We have a really strong partnership with the recreation department, and this memorandum of understanding really helps us address the services that we both provide. This allows us to maximize our resources without duplicating services. During the summertime, the recreation department is provided with some funds from us, and those funds go primarily to the volunteer in the park program, which you may know as the VIP program. This is a community service and leadership program. Important to note, this is a pre, a free program for students, and our funds really help defray some of the costs for supplies and materials. Last summer, there were 66 youth who participated, and we anticipate that there will be at least that many, if not more, this summer. It's a really good program for kids. It provides them with a lot of unique experiences and opportunities to grow in leadership, learn all about what it means to be volunteer, and to serve other people. Additionally, during the school year, we provide funds that support after-school youth enrichment programs. This again helps defray some of the costs for participants for things like early release, special activities, fencing, flag football, volleyball, and also babysitter training. Last year, there were 300 students who participated in programs that were a part of this, and we, we just really believe in this partnership that we have with them. It's a strong working relationship that we have, and if you can take a moment to look at the memorandum itself, you'll notice that in the spirit of that is completely the same as in past years. We did just a small amount of cleanup this year, which means some of the programs listed might be a little bit different, but otherwise, the way that we work together and the funds, all of those things have remained the same. Again, we're just so fortunate to have this kind of a relationship with the city and with the school district. A lot of communities, they are not as committed to making sure that we're not duplicating things. I've had a great time of working with Joey Shugel. He's got a lot of innovative ideas, and we have a lot of good things planned between us. It's nice, we have a shared interest of making sure that we are providing quality programs for kids and working together and to make those kind of things happen. Do you have any questions about the memorandum?
Well, I think you stated it very well. It's been working marvelously, and, and the total cost of the school district for this is just slightly over $10,000. And boy, if we could get that kind of bang for every $10,000 we spend, that would, that would really be something. So, well done in managing this program and seeing that it's utilized well, Tammy.
Well, thank you.
It's a good deal.
Is this a motion or a resolution?
I screwed that up earlier. We're going to have to recircle one of them that we did earlier. We're going to have to go back and do it over. This is a motion. This one can be a motion.
Well, I will make that motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and the school district.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Good going.
Thank you.
And as I said, I made a mistake on approval of our yearly governmental lease. That was to be a resolution and not a motion. So Mr. Meeks is going to help me out by asking-
Mr. Chair, I vote on prevailing side, and I ask, I reconsider Agenda Item 2, approval of yearly governmental leases under Action Items.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move the, I move a resolution that we approve the governmental lease to the Hometown Bank.
Second.
There's a second. This is a resolution and a roll call vote. We'll start with the lady.
Aye.
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 And the resolution is unanimous, and the lease is approved. Thank you. That wheels us through all of our action items. And John, just so you know the information, I will not disappoint you.
Awesome. Good.
First reading tonight of Chapter 2, School Board Policy. Mr. Meeks?
Well, Mr. Chair, this is the first time I've had the privilege, I think, privilege of doing this, so bear with me and be kind. I'm going to try to skip over those minimal things where we change a comma to a period or vice versa. Much of the changes we have in here, clarification and/or editing, some of them I'll mention in passing, but when we get back to the ethics part of the policy, we're going to spend a little more time. So, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to start walking until you tell me to stop. You want to stop now?
I was going to suggest.
No.
Drew's been over it a few times.
Well, let's move to page 75, and I'm just going to walk through these pages. This is your, and up at the very top, you'll see number nine is Stricken Shared Programs Services Committee, two to three members. None of us could remember that committee ever meeting, and if in the future the board needs a committee that would do the things that we're going to see on page 11, that the shared programs and services committee does or did, you can reinstitute the committee at any time. So that, we're striking that at number nine. If you move over to page 11, what I just talked about, we're just striking what the committee's supposed to do or what its assignment is. Moving on, if you move to page 20, or 91, excuse me. In the middle of the page, you'll see we strike and, and we actually had and, and after number three, and we put identification of those attending. This is when we close meetings. And you remember, we always say, Drew says he's there, and Ben, and right on down the line. Because we do that, and it is required by law, but because we do that, we thought we should identify it as part of our process to close the meeting. So we're adding those, that number four. Over on page 34 is where we kind of jump into this ethics stuff. And it really looks like we're doing more than we're doing. But if you look at, I'm just going to start walking down it here. Number six, recognize the responsibility together of the school board members. This is a belief, this isn't a policy. And it really isn't needed. It's a good idea, and it's, it's how we operate, but there's nothing that involves policy here, that's just a belief. Number seven, work through the administrative employees. No, we don't. We work through the superintendent. We shouldn't be going directly to other administrative employees, asking them to do work for us or, or prepare reports or this type of thing. That's what our relationship with the superintendent is. Number nine, that's just restating law. We have to operate under the open meeting law, and it's required of us, so it isn't necessary to state it in policy. If you move over to page 35, it's more of a clarification, a C5, and making decisions at school board meetings only after all sides of debatable questions have been presented. That's just bad wording. I mean, who knows when all sides have been presented? There's always somebody out there that has one more thing to say or one more idea. So we, we try to clarify a little bit, only after debate is ended. Then you make your decision, the board makes a decision. Delegate detail to school board action, do it. Here we go with the administrative employees again. No, we work through the superintendent. Down at the bottom of the page, four, assist a business transaction, school district being unethical, transparent, be on an open and above-board basis what we have now. We're clarifying that, ethical, transparent, and in compliance with state statute. Page 36, number three, all right, excuse me, 103, I've got two page numbers here, and I think you do too, hopefully. Number three, assure that school district will be administered by the best professional personnel available. Well, we got Jeff coming in, so what do we do?
Just take that part out for a year.
Yeah, just, we'll remove that for a year, and then we'll get that. No, this is, in all seriousness, this is a great goal to have, and I think we've done a, former boards and this board's done a great job with making sure that that's true, but it's almost impossible to gauge or to hold yourself accountable if you meant this or if you didn't mean this. Moving on, 37, or 104. Every public officer who violates this provision is guilty of a gross misdemeanor. Now we're talking about school board ethics conflict of interest. We're not a court. We don't determine what people are guilty of. The courts will determine that if action is taken, legal action is taken, so there's no need to have that, it's actually out of place, it's not our, our charge to do this, so we're just striking it. Moving over to page 105, use time granted. Now, we're talking here about-
Conflict of interest.
Still conflict of interest, but this is kind of an interesting place to use it. It says, use time granted for leave, planning, and workshops for purposes which are not intended. And it, the way it reads, it, it-
Members of the school board will not.
Shall not. And again, I, you know, so you have lunches, that's not part of a, it just, it's poorly written. I know what they're trying to get at, but I'm not sure that this does it. We all go to training, we all go to different meetings, we all participate in those meetings. It's required of us by going, and, and we kind of govern ourselves on that. Spouse, school district employee group, down at the bottom of page 105, we're striking the language, and this is talking about when a spouse is a member of a bargaining group or, or an employee of the district. And in the very last sentence there, it says, in order for the school board to invoke this exception, it must, must have a majority of disinterested members of the school board to approve the contract. Suggest the school board member spouse to abstain from voting to approve the contract, publicly set out the essential facts. That's all good stuff, except that the court said that the spouse does not have to abstain. As long as, if my wife would be a teacher, we're approving the teacher contract, as long as my wife is not separated out, given additional advantages or more money, is treated the same as all others, the court says you have a responsibility to vote. You're elected by the people, and you should be voting on all things. So we're suggesting we strike that line, and courts have made numerous decisions along this line, so it's really, it's, it's appropriate to do this. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that takes care of what we have. So on behalf of answering any question, we'd really like your feedback, we'd hope to bring this back. We have another policy meeting, I think, on July 12. We hope to bring this back to the July board meeting for final approval.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep. Thank you.
We're going to get an update now on the Summer Read and Feed program.
Summer Read and Feed, can you believe it's been 10 years since we started that program? It's our 10th year of the Read and Feed. As you may recall, the summer food program is programmed through the, through USDA, and it's administered through the Department of Education. As I said, we've been, we've been a summer food service site for the last 10 years. Our program is called Read and Feed. It's always been held at the high school, middle school sites, at 100 Lincoln Drive site. Last year, the north site was approved as well, as an open site, which means anyone can come, ages one to 18, and eat free. Due to the ceiling repair at north this year, we went back to one location for this year, and then next year, north will open back up again. So we're excited to have those two locations, and that really worked well for summer programming last year. With our, our move this year, all of our summer programming is being held at the middle school site, so 100 Lincoln Drive. So currently, we have summer SAC, we have the high school level of summer school, we have the middle school some, level of summer school. In July, we'll start our Targeted Services Stars Academy program at that site, so all of those kids are able to come to the Read and Feed and eat free. The Read and Feed runs Monday through Friday. We added Fridays last year, which have proven to be, was a really good move. Monday through Friday, from breakfast from 7:30 till 9:00, and lunch from 11:00 until 12:30. From 11:30 to 12:00 each day, there are activities for kids to take part in. And in your packet, there's a, a little handout that went home to parents, and you might note that Exploration Recreation also comes to the Read and Feed site on Tuesdays. That's a new program through Park and Rec. So again, partnering with the city, as Tammy mentioned, they're bringing their crew to Read and Feed on Tuesdays, so kids can take part in those activities. So that's, that's just a great opportunity for kids and families. Prices went up a little bit this year, so if an adult wants to eat, they can pay $2.30 for breakfast or $4.00 for lunch. They can also bring their own lunch. A lot of times, we see families bring their kids, the kids eat, and then maybe mom or dad eats at home. But certainly, we're, we're welcoming everyone to the program. Our numbers have been really strong as we started. We had 100, or, excuse me, one 280-day, but at, the average is around 250, 260. Fridays have tended to been a little bit lower, around 150, but certainly, we're happy that we're open. We have public transit, which makes about eight, seven stops throughout the city of St. Peter, so kids, families were notified of where those stops were. Kids can ride transit free, and then transit comes on back, picks those kids up, and, and takes them home for the afternoon, or maybe they head on down to the pool. Been an exciting, busy place this summer. You know, it's interesting, Dr. Peterson and I were talking about, not often in a district do we have pre-K through 12 all in one site. So there have been some things that we've needed to adjust this year to make that go smoothly, but I think we're doing, we're doing- smoothly, but I think we're doing, we're doing a really good job with that. So with that, just a reminder that this is a self-supported program. So we're reimbursed for each of the meals that we serve. So we have a cashier that marks off meals, those are entered into our click system, and then we receive that money back through MDE. So self-sustaining. Any questions for me about the Read and Feed?
Ten years.
Ten years, I know.
I think it was thirty-seven kids.
Yeah.
Was the break-even number.
Yes.
We needed to get thirty-seven kids to make it work.
And we averaged, like, that first year, like, 110 or something like that. It's crazy. But yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a great program, and we hope to continue it at the Lincoln Drive site. North will continue there. Because of that site eligibility, they will continue on. Very hopeful. We had some confusion with the state this year due to the name change from St. Peter High School to St. Peter Middle School, but we're hoping to work through that and ensure that this, that Lincoln Drive site continues to be eligible. So I would encourage anyone who might be listening, send kids down, come on down. We do ask that any child seven and under is accompanied by a responsible caregiver, but come down for breakfast or lunch. It's the best meal in town.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next item we have is informational item related to the superintendent's evaluation. And our superintendent is, how many hours you got left here? I think, to not disappoint you, John, I don't have my letter done.
Yes. Yes. Every year, I've been on the board.
Not last year, last year you were disappointed, right?
Oh, that's right. You ruined it last year.
That's right. But all of the components of traditional superintendent evaluation have been completed, which include reports or evaluations from his direct reports, and the advisory committee, other stakeholder groups, the board has done theirs. We had a closed session where we shared together with Dr. Peterson. He was providing us with additional information, and we were able to give him direct feedback. The last component of that is the letter that I write, related to the district health and Dr. Peterson's evaluation. And obviously, it was a very good evaluation for him again, as indicated by other people want him, right? And we've always known that he's been doing a good job, great job for us, and great enough so that he's been able to be, to improve his career and to be a close neighbor yet. So I have yet to do my part, which is to break that final note, but it was a very good year for our superintendent and moved the district forward. We had given him a number of goals at the beginning of the year, and they included to work with instructional practices for all of our students, to implement safety and security initiatives, to develop a comprehensive financial plan, which, you can tell at nauseam, we talk about finances, and that's, it's because it's important, and the superintendent really needs to be on top of that, and to continue to develop the staff and school board leadership Because this is, this is a district that cannot be run by one man, or one woman, or one teacher, or one janitor. It requires a group effort, and that group effort requires everyone to be leaders at their own level, and that's all about communication and vision and understanding and keeping the main thing, the main thing, you know? And I think one of the benefits we've had, and Dr. Peterson has really leveraged this and grown it into something much larger than it started to be, is our simple phrase, learning Everybody knows. So I have to write my letter, and it will be briefer this year than it has been in the past, because we're kicking him out. No, actually, he's, he's going on, so that'll be done by the, by our next board meeting.
Maybe.
Oh, it will be. July, July 15th. Anything you'd like to add, Dr. Peterson?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Which brings us to reports for the evening. Do we have...
You have Charlie's Angels.
All right.
So certainly, part of my report tonight was the Read and Feed information, but I did want to share with you that early childhood special education started extended school year today. So we had a great first day. We'll have two weeks in June, and then we'll have a week in July of our preschoolers who qualify coming in for services during the summer to help prevent that loss of skills over the summer. Then on July 8th, we will start Summer Stars Academy, and that's part of our targeted services program that we qualify for based on our area on learning center status. And that will be kindergarten through grade six, and students will come in for four weeks, four days a week, four hours a day for summer programming. Again, those students are invited based on assessment data and meets, and so we have a whole crew of teachers and professionals coming in to make sure that we curb that summer slide.
All right, and I just wanted to touch a little bit on the curriculum review process that happened a couple of weeks ago. We do it the Tuesday right after school gets out, we start it. And this year, we had FIED and CTE came in for their first year of review, so they really were looking at their current programming and looking at best research, research-based programming, and trying to, they will come up then and present in May a list of strengths and limitations, and bring forward some recommendations and an action plan for developing their programming a little bit further. Year two, which is in charge of creating that implementation manual. Now, what does that programming look like in our K-12 setting? We had both math and health that were in this summer doing that, and ELA, because it encompasses such a large group of people, and they were, some of them were tied up with the math, we will be doing a two-day, half-day review with that in July. We also took about 30 people to the PDS, which is the professional development schools, Access and Equity, summer institute last week that was held at Prairie Winds Middle School. So it was nice to have 30 of the people out of the 335 that were there from St. Peter, so we had a nice representation. We also have, within the K-8 program, both reading and math training going on throughout the summer. As you're aware, we have two new curriculums coming in, so we've been able to space that training throughout the summer and give them the opportunity to go home, cut a little bit, come back, get some more training, go back home and cut a little bit, where each teacher received an entire paper box full of printed cardstock materials that they are prepping over the summer for the reading materials. So it was wonderful to be able to get those back from Nelson Printing so early, so that we can start working on that. We also have South looking beautiful. They have started to clean over there with North shut down. They were able to focus on South, and it looks like we can take kids back tomorrow, but I think the teachers may need a couple more days to cut, and then they'll be good. And as Tim mentioned, we are continuing to watch our enrollment numbers. We're currently sitting with about 40 more kindergartners than we had last year at this same timeframe. So that's good news. We're at 145 as of today, so hopefully, we will hit those projected numbers. But if anyone needs to register, just a reminder that they can do that at door V up in the, in the district registration office. Busy summer ahead.
Thank you, Farrah.
Thank you.
Can we just make stuff up about North and the middle school while those guys aren't here? Speaking of the middle school, I'd like to thank Mr. Graff and his staff for hosting summer school. There are a lot of sessions of high school summer school that kids are involved in for one reason or another, for credit generation, and that's hosted at the middle school, and that decision was made because of Read and Feed being, being at that school, and there's no transportation provided for kids for summer school, so it's more centrally located, and kids can more easily get to summer school. And we start that right away, the Monday after, after school is out, in hopes that we don't lose anybody over the summer. They, they don't forget that they're, they're supposed to attend. And we will have, we will have a couple, at least a couple more graduates at the end of summer school session. So, you know, one way or another, getting that diploma is the most important thing, even if it doesn't necessarily happen, happen on graduation night. We also had another, had another amazing spring season with our co-curriculars. It was great fun watching our boys' baseball team at State for the first time since '82, and we had a handful of individual and relay, relay teams make it for track as well, and golf as well. We had tennis, and tennis, oh my word, golfing to every, almost every sport. And one shot, one away in girls' softball as well, so it was a, it was a crazy ride this year with our co-curriculars. And the high school is, even though we don't host summer school, it's still crazy busy up there with camps, in the gym, and soon, the Prairie Fire Theater program will be taking place in the Performing Arts Center, so still hopping up there as well.
Questions for any of our... Thank you so much. How are you controlling the gnats? Just curious.
How, how am I controlling the gnats?
Up at our, we don't have any gnats for lunch or Read and Feed or nothing, do we?
We don't have any.
Really dome over the place.
Everything's fried in vanilla.
We must be the gnat capital of the state of Minnesota. They're just terrible. They're just terrible. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, very...
This your last one?
There you go.
Of an official meeting?
Yes, yes, so just a few things to mention. I talked with Mark Bachman today about our projects throughout the district. He provided a great update at our admin team meeting. The parking lot fixes and additions at St. Peter High School will start Monday. He has talked with Nielsen, who is doing all the work, and they are very, very confident they'll have plenty of time working through June and July to make sure that that's all ready to go for next fall. I also want to mention that Mr. Graff, middle school principal, has a, has a team of folks up at a restorative practices conference this week. It's really important as we continue to look at the ongoing work of our equity framework and safe welcoming inclusive schools, our behavior management program. John has really taken the concept of restorative practices and trying to figure out how that might look at, really, all grades, but obviously focused on the 580 building, so looking forward to hearing about his conference and all the things that he is learning there. Doreen did mention the PDS Equity Summit last week. Not only were there, you know, 30-some St. Peter teachers there and 300-plus from around the region, but there's a lot of St. Peter teachers who were presenting. And it's, it's really great. Green and Eteve and so many members of the St. Peter team helped organize and facilitate just the logistics of bringing all those people to Prairie Winds. And again, just, there's so many positive comments from people about the St. Peter presence there and the presentations that were done, so want to extend a thank you to all the folks who were a part of that and just took time out of their summer to keep learning about what all means. You know, when we say all means all, what does that mean for all kids and for all families who we work with? And then the final thing is that Dr. Olson and I have been meeting several times over the last month, as he continues his transition into the superintendency here, starting on July 1st. It is a, just been a wonderful experience to work with him in this realm. Obviously, everyone knows that he's been a professional mentor of mine for a really long time, so it's been fun to do, and thank you very much.
All righty, board members around the table. Ms. Vicki's got to go handle a water problem.
I just want to apologize for being tardy, but the Locans Guard successfully did register their final child at River Falls, so it's a done deal.
Did you leave in there?
Sort of. My wife said, will you take him now?
Just a quick one, I got a heads up that Mr. Bolem is bringing a number of students down to court on Wednesday morning, and I, I couldn't figure out why they were walking to the courthouse. I just found out there's no transportation, so that's why they're walking to the courthouse. But they're going to sit through arraignment court, which is going to be really interesting for them, because that, either you plead guilty, or you plead not guilty, or you strike a deal with the prosecutor, so it's very kind of a neat thing if they haven't seen it before. I'm sure they'll enjoy it. And I didn't see anybody from the board on the calendar.
Did you see a duke?
Yeah, there was a duke there, but I don't know.
So I guess, I just want to publicly thank Paul for his years of service to the St. Peter School District, first as a principal, or teacher and principal, and as a superintendent. Like I always say, when we go to that winter conference, and I've developed some friendships with members of other school boards, we just have no idea how lucky we have it in our district. And while I'm excited to spend next year with the superintendent that I came in with, that was superintendent when I started on the school board, it's tough to lose a friend and such a true professional at his job, and so we wish you well, and thank you for all the things that you've done to make this district a special one.
Thanks, John. Good job, John.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Drew?
Thank you for your years of service to our district and the community at large. We're lucky to have you. Thank you very much for your service.
A couple of things I'd like to just bring people, make sure that we're aware of, is that there's at least one person who isn't running for school board this next time around. That'd be me. So the opportunity to become a candidate to run for school board in District 508, it begins on July the 30th and runs through August the 13th of this coming year. I'll repeat that, July the 30th through August the 13th. I think it costs you $2, and you got to go see the new gal. She knows how to do it. It's easy. And the water's warm, I invite you to come on in. So again, that's July 30th to August 13th. I'll probably tell you that again in our July meeting. Also, just, I know that summer just started, but we go back to school for real at the high school on August the 26th, and at the middle school in North and South on August the 28th. New teacher workshop is August the 12th. August the 19th is regular teacher workshop week. So anybody who's got kids in sports, probably gets to be fair time, Nickla County Fair Time, and, and it's going to be starting soon after that. I'm pretty sure we got a football game that first week of school that we're back. So just for those of you who are working out your summer scheduling and your, your plans, I know it's all on the calendar, but I'm just reminding you that for real, August the 26th, we're back in, we're going full steam, and so enjoy, enjoy the bugs in the blue sky while you can. So that's all I have. We have upcoming meetings of the school board. We have Policy Committee Friday the 12th, District Office, 7:00 AM. Our board study session is two hours before, or an hour and a half, hour and a half before our, our regular board meeting on July the 15th. That'll be in the Travis DeSue Room, and then our regular meeting will be here, July 15th, at the standard time of 6:30. And there may be other committee meetings that get scheduled, and they'll be published in a normal way. Which brings us to our favorite agenda item.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion, the second, all is in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion carried, adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Drew? Got some work for you.
Good, let's save it till the end.
Good, right.